All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals for June 20th. We'll start with a roll call. Kirsten, do you want to take?
Kirsten Bender.
Tyson Bean.
Bill Schnaber.
Brian Lindaback.
Mike Warrington.
Stephanie Gillespie.
All right. And we have some minutes from May 16th this year. Everybody get a chance to review those. We also have some subdivision committee minutes in there for reference.
The familiar April.
April 18.
It was April.
Oh, we don't have the May. That's okay. We'll do that next time. So we have April 18th minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the April 18th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting.
A motion by Mr. Schnaber.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bean. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Moving on. We have some communications committee staff reports and potential residential development report. So, I don't know if there's anything new to talk about here. We have a full agenda, so I think we just keep this thing rolling.
Yeah.
Item number five, I am going to recuse myself from this item and let our vice chair take over.
All right, I'll call the order on to Z 2017-03, Proposed Amendment to Number Six, to the Amendment Cornerstone Addition Preliminary Plant PUD, to make some following changes. Rezone existing B3 Central Shop District to a R4 Multi-Family Residential District, and to reconfigure the boundaries of Parcell Six and Seven to expand to Parcel Sev... Expand the area of Parcel Seven. Les, do you have anything to mention on this?
I think you've pretty well summed it up. This is more or less just shifting the boundary between two parcels to expand the area for these town homes.
All right. Is there anyone from Cornerstone here to speak on your behalf?
Good evening. Will Clevinger with Ruggles &amp; Bohm on behalf of the applicant. We're in agreement with Les' comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions?
None here.
Mm-mm. Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open this up to the public if you have... If there's anyone here that wishes to speak on it. If not, we'll close the public hearing portion. Deliberation? Anyone?
None here.
Anyone who want to make a motion?
We've got to go through the check.
Findings first.
Oh, wait, where are those things? Am I missing those? Okay, findings and factors. What are the existing uses and their care... And their character of conditions of the subject property and their surroundings and neighborhoods?
Just real quickly, I want to make sure no one needs to disqualify themselves from this conversation due to...
Does anyone else need to disqualify themselves?
What's the term?
Ex parte.
Or ex parte?
Ex parte communication.
Disclose any...
What is the current zoning of the subject property that the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? I don't think that applies.
We've provided those to you.
Yeah.
To the north is B2 Neighborhood Business District, Robert Martin Elementary School. To the south, B3 Central Shopping District, vacant land. To the east, B2 Neighborhood Business District, vacant land. And to the west is in the city of Wichita, it's the Monarch Landing Commercial and Single Family Residential.
Okay. Okay, number three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as factor... As zoned a factor in the consideration? I would think that would be no. Would the request correct any error in application of these regulations?
No.
No. Is the request caused by changed or challenging... Changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what are the nature and significance of such changes and changing conditions? That would be no.
No.
Do adequate sewer disposal and water supply of the necessary public facilities indicate a street access exist? Or can they be provided to serve the uses that would permit it on the subject property?
Yes.
Yes. All the utilities are in place. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for right-ofways, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Yes. Number eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential use of the subject property? That would be no. Are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that are currently... That currently has the same zoning as is requested? There are some smaller vacant parcels zoned for duplex in the Cornerstone PUD closer to the Andover Road, about a half mile to the east of the subject property. So that would be yes. If the request... If the request is for business or industrial use, are there such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? I think that would be N/A. Is a subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?
Yes.
Yes.
To what extent would removal of the existing, i.e., the approval of the zone requested, detrimental effect other than property of its neighbors? No detriment is perceived? Would the request to... Consistent with the proposed of the zoning district classification and the intended purpose of these regulations? Yes. Is the request for conformance of the comprehensive plan? And does it further enhance the implementation of this plan?
Yes.
Yes. Because the comprehensive plan recognizes the abundant... Overabundance of vacant commercial property and the need for the variety of houses of this type. Number 15, what is the nature of the support and opposition of this request? There's no... None at this time. Number 16, are there any informational materials or recommendations available for acknowledgement... Acknowledgement persons or experts that would be helpful in this evaluation? Approval contingent on satisfactory planning and access control? And number 17, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare outweigh the loss of the property value and the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving this request? I would think no.
So do we have?
I think we need... And number nine?
And nine, yeah.
What about sixteen?
We could put 12 in there because there's no detriment.
Six, seven, nine, and 12. Ready then?
Yes, yep. Make... Is there any motions?
I move that having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the zoning application, I, William Schnaber, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z 2017-03 be approved to amend the Cornerstone Preliminary Plan Unit Development to change the zoning district classification of a portion of Parcel Six from the B3 Central Shopping District to the R4 Multiple Family Residential District, and reconfigure the boundaries of Parcel Six and Seven based on the findings, six, seven, nine, and 12, of the Planning Commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing. And that the following condition be attached to this recommendation. Contingent upon satisfactory plating.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, motion by Schnaber and second by Tyson. All approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay. Brian? Wait, let me...
Last page of the... Of the first bundle then. Is it this one here? Right there.
Okay. All right, this case will be forwarded to the governing body with the Planning Commission's recommendations and a written summary of the hearing and consideration of the regular meeting of July 11th, 2017, which begins at 7:00 PM in the council meeting room in City Hall. The video recorded of this hearing will be retained for at least 60 days after the final determination is completed of this case. Protest petitions against this change in zoning and/or special use but not directed by the Planning Commission's recommendations as such may be received by the city clerk 14 days after today, i.e. July the 4th, at 4:30 PM. If there is any properly signed or notarized protest petitions with accurate legal descriptions from the owners of record of 20% of any real property proposed to be rezoned or owners of the recorded of 20% or more of the total real property within the official area of notification, both inside and outside the city, not counted public... Not counting public streets or right-ofways, then such a change shall not be passed except in the three-fourth vote of the members of the governing body, Section 11-103. Okay, Brian? Hand this back over.
Okay, thank you so much. On to item number six. This is a vacation case, VA 2017-01. It's a public hearing on a petition for a vacation beginning at the northwest corner of the 20-foot rear yard utility easement, drainage and utility easement. The applicant has already constructed a decorative wall within the rear yard utility easement in violation of the conditions of the building permit, and three of the utility providers have expressed opposition to the vacation of this easement requested because of the conflicts to their facilities and function. Les, I would like to hear a little bit of background from you before we proceed.
I think Phil Myers here from Baughman to talk about this.
Okay.
I believe they'd like to defer this to give them a moment to discuss the conflicts with the utilities because the locates that were provided didn't show that conflict.
Okay. Can we hear from the applicant or agent?
Phil Meyer with Baughman. I agree with what Les just said.
Okay.
We are going to ask for a deferral. I'm open. One Planning Commissioner, two, however you want to word your motion. I think I can work it out before your next Planning Commission, but I just need to meet with the utility companies on site. The utilities all sit north of the fence or are not within this 10-foot, but there's a little confusion on that. So, I've talked to most of them today. They're willing to reconsider, and I need a little time to work through that.
Well, we'll gladly hear this at a different time then.
Thank you.
And do we have a motion to defer this case for at least a month?
To the July 18th meeting.
To the July 18th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we defer this hearing on VA 2017-01 to the July 18th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item. And now we're going to go ahead and recess the Planning Commission and convene as the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, get situated here. Okay, this is a BZA case, VA 2017-03. It's a public hearing on an application filed by Andover Family Dentistry requesting a variance to permit a five-foot, six-inch increase in the required 10-foot maximum height limitation to allow for the construction of a new 15-foot, six-inch-high monument sign on property...
Chairman, I'm sorry. You guys need to vote to recess to this board of...
Oh, my fault. I kind of mentioned that, but I didn't ever do it, so...
I'll move to recess the Planning Commission and convene the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and plenty of seconds. Well, I think...
It's unanimous.
Take your favorite.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All righty, thank you. And so, where I was at was... I was talking about this monument sign on property zoned B1 Office Business District and B2 Neighborhood Business District located at 1145 North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas. The subject property houses multiple tenants, which makes the opportunity for signage a currently restricted for each tenant very small. Staff sees no reason not to approve the variance pending the outcome of the public hearing. Anything more on that, Les? Beyond what we've talked about already? Okay. So we have a piece of property that has two different zoning classifications, and the signage is apparently a bit too small for the needs of the businesses there. Everybody tracking, and we got a nice visual of the proposed sign, looks like. And we have a nice letter and aerial photograph to review. And with that, if there's no deliberation up at the board, the committee...
Is this a illuminated sign as well?
It appears that it would be, but we can ask the applicant. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and... Or the agent, and provide any background necessary.
Good evening. My name is John Sandin. I'm the owner and operator of Rawn Sign Company in Wichita, Kansas. I'm here to represent this case. So, as you can see, we have a pretty unique sign that is a projecting mount sign that we're trying to get approved. The only criteria from my understanding, and Les, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is it's not necessarily the size, it's just the height. So, in our current address, we're allowed to be at 10 feet, and we're simply asking to go to 15 foot, six inches. There's a few reasons why we want to do that. We're a multi-tenant center. We want, from a static standpoint, to represent each one of our tenants on the top part of the sign, as you can see on the drawing, to allow them to state what they do and who they are. And then we wanted to utilize a colored LED below it to help promote their businesses and help us promote the center to keep it full and kind of keep up with the times, if you will. And with that said, I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
Is the lighted portion of the sign on 24 hours a day?
That can be adjusted accordingly. Our LED is going to conform under the automatic dimmer, if you will, meaning at nighttime it will dim down not to affect the traffic like I believe most signs should be doing. Ours will do that automatically. Our top proportion of the sign will be LED lighted, which will be green, if you will. Whether that stays on or not would... I haven't discussed that with the owner. If it's something that we feel that we need to do to help get our sign, we can certainly talk about it.
So the business names are backlit with green lighting?
They're backlit with a white 12-volt LED.
Okay.
The existing signage, what is going to happen with that and its foundation and base unit there? Is that being completely removed?
Okay. Les, you please.
Their existing sign was damaged in a storm, so it's no longer there.
Okay.
Because there's no base concrete or anything like that, it has to be removed. Okay.
Okay. And the only other question I have, and it's more of a Les question, would be, how about easements? The sign is... The proposed sign is not going to be encroaching in any easements that we need for the future?
The subject property is platted, so all the right-ofways are in place, and the sign couldn't encroach over on the right-ofway.
Okay.
Would this sign meet our proposed regulations for signs? Are... In the ones we're working on? Or does it meet it?
Probably not. It'd probably still be in a... In an area that would have a maximum 10-foot height. However, we may... We may adjust that 10-feet height a little bit. I don't know if it'll be 15 feet or 12.
And the brightness?
In the brightness of the LEDs, there will be some prescriptive standards for the lighting in the new regulation. But today, there are just some very gray words that say that it, you know, can't affect the traffic and it can't shine on residential neighbors.
There's not a concern for the location of the new signage next to the driveway there? It looks like it's fairly close to that. It's not going to cause any problems viewing-wise leaving or coming into it?
Line of sight?
It's back far enough. We'll see all of those dimensions when we're at site plan review.
I think my only concern, you know, I just echo what everybody's already talking about is the brightness. I know that some signs are obnoxiously bright, and it sounds like you have that handled. Let's hope we have it handled regulatory-wise that we can help to enforce that in the future.
We're not interested at all in being a nuisance that way.
Sure.
We want to be effective, but through a safe environment.
Sure. I appreciate that. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. At this time, we'll open it up to public comment.
All right, thank you.
If there is any. Thank you.
Thank you.
And seeing no public comment at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And any comments or concerns here? We'll go through a little housekeeping items here before we get fully on with our deliberations. Is that... I don't have any disqualifications on this case either, do we? Anyone? This case was notified and the... And published in the Butler County Times-Gazette on May 27th, and notices were mailed to 17 owners of record of real property within the notification area on May 24th, 2017. The record shows that at least 20 days has elapsed between the publication and the mailing dates and the hearing date. Unless there's any evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I'll declare that proper notification has been given. And so that... Didn't hear anybody here complaining about notifications, so we're good there. And we've got all the written communication. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
You have the variance report, all those conditions to discuss.
We do need to read through a bit more work here, huh? Nice try, Brian. Okay. We've got items one through seven. To ver... We are... The board will deliberate the request. First, we determine if the request is... Is one of the instances under the zoning regulations authorize us to grant the variance. Those permitted are listed in your copy on the checklist. To vary, I think we are looking at item number five. We've got a dimensional sign provision, Section 71-02 regarding the general standards, and Section 7-104 regarding district regulations. Yep. So based on the application, this request meets the criteria for number six of the above pertaining to...
Number five.
Number five. And so that gives us a green light to proceed to determine whether there's evidence presented to support the conclusions of the required five findings of fact. Okay, so first finding of fact, the particular physical surroundings, shape and topographical conditions of the specific property involved... conditions of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon or for the owner, leasing or occupant as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if this provision of these regulations were literally enforced, because the subject property houses multiple tenants, and in order to provide a space for each tenant, a larger sign is necessary. I think everybody
An agreement.
agrees with that. Number two, the request for a variance is not based exclusively, exclusively upon the desire of the owner or leasing or occupant or applicant to make more money out of the property. And I think for reasons of the same that we just discussed, because the subject property houses multiple tenants, and in order to provide a space for each tenant, a larger sign is necessary. The granting the variance will not materially, materially be detrimental or injurious of other properties or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. And I think we all agree, because the size of the sign is in proportion to the size of the building. And number four, the proposed variance will not impair any adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increase congestion on public streets, roads, or increase danger of fire or endanger of public safety or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. I think we all agree, because the sign will only be taller than, than the allowed 10-foot. It will not be out of character for the surrounding area. So, we've gone through the evidence that demonstrates the facts. And now we'll look at specific conditions. The variance request arises from such condition, which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily, narrowly found in the same zoning district, and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or applicant. Because the subject property houses multiple tenants in order to provide a space for each tenant on a larger sign, this is, it's necessary. The granted, the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, because the size of the sign is proportional to the size of the building. We're on item number three that supports this. And that the strict application of the provisions of these regulations from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. I think, because of the subject property houses multiple tenants in order to provide more space for each tenant, I don't see that it is necessary. I don't see it being a hardship or... The variance desired will not adversely affect public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, because of the size of the sign is proportional to the building. The granting of the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations, because the size of the side, size of the sign is proportional to the size of the building. Okay. I think we made it. All right. Now, we need a motion.
We don't have any conditions.
Nope, I don't see any.
So, just as requested.
I think it'll be as requested.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, having considered the evidence at the hearing, and determined that the findings of the fact in the variance report have been found to exist that support all the five conditions set out in section 10-107D1 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12-759E of the state statutes, which are necessary for granting of a variance. I, William Schnaber, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA V 2017-03 as requested.
I'll second it.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have some closing remarks here. A resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant by June 30th of this year. If anyone is agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within 30 days after this resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you for coming. Okay. Next, item eight. This is BZA case V 2017-04. This is a public hearing on an application filed by Dollar Tree requesting a variance to increase the required 5% maximum surface area of a wall signage limitation to 17.10% for the purpose of installing a larger wall sign on property zone B4, Central Business District, located at 530 North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas. The subject property houses multiple tenants, which makes the opportunity for signage as currently restricted for each tenant very small. And staff sees no reason not to approve the variance, pending any outcome of the, of the public hearing here. So, that seems pretty square foot. We've got some increase in square footage of the wall signage. And the distinction here is that it was a wall sign as opposed to a monument sign or a pylon sign that sits out front.
Chairman, we put on the bench a letter we received today.
Okay, I see that. Everybody has a moment to take a look at that if they have not already. Okay. Everybody get a chance to digest that, okay?
Yes.
All right. We have an aerial photograph of the site. And this is a prominent strip mall in our community. And we have a rendering of what the signage looks like. And is there anything that you can shed any additional light on to, to date here, Les?
No, I think we summed up our comments pretty well. This is another multi-tenant situation. And that this shopping center was built in the early 1980s. The building was something like 370 feet in diameter. The whole of the sign found in the building appeared very small from the street.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions of Les?
None here.
I have a question.
Okay.
Whenever. Do we have the dimensions for Tuesday Morning's sign, by chance? Are they within the variance?
Tuesday Morning also has a variance for their sign, for the, for the same reasons.
And as far as this to their scale, do we know how that relates? Like, how much bigger this one will be?
Are the letters the same size?
I would have to look at the exact dimensions, but they're of a very similar scale in the four-foot range.
Okay.
And maybe, Les, maybe the applicant would be able to shed some light on this. How, is this, I presume this is a vacant parcel, you know, a vacant tenant? And then how long has it been vacant?
As far as I know, this is the space that was vacated by the Ed's IGA back in the 1990s.
Okay, that's quite a while.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. There we go.
Okay. I just have three comments.
Uh-huh.
Okay. One, do they not have a sign that's closer to Andover Road that advertises for them? Can't they be on that sign out there, out front, closer to Andover Road? Or is that not up?
Talking about the marquee sign?
Yeah, isn't there a marquee sign out there that puts all the...
Yes, there would presumably be a panel in the marquee sign.
Okay, so they have that. And then the other question I have is, if they increase their signage, do all the other businesses in that strip mall, can they do that? Is that going to set a precedence for all of those businesses to increase their size?
If there were a precedence to be set, it was already set by Tuesday Morning.
So, this is within that precedence?
Correct.
Yeah. It's my third one. I think that was it.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I do have, I do.
Okay, one more?
It's my understanding that what we did on Andover Road to get rid of all of the wires and that visible distraction, is this going to be distracting to Andover Road? I mean, is this...
I think that could be a perception thing. I don't know if we can measure that or quantify that.
No, but we were trying to clean up the, the appearance. Is this going to make a difference?
Well, I mean, it's...
It's 300 feet back off of Andover Road.
It's also debatable that, you know, if we can get a viable tenant in there that's been vacant for a long time, that would be beneficial to Andover as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is this next to Tuesday Morning? Left or right?
It's on the right, isn't it? South, on the south of it.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no more questions of staff, I'll go ahead and call the applicant and our agent up to the podium and please state your name and, oh, same. And go through the same motion that we just did.
I guess for the record, my name's John Sandin. I'm with Ron Sign Company in Wichita, Kansas, once again.
Thank you.
Just as much what you spoke about, Dollar Tree has selected this location to come to Andover with. It is a location that's been vacant for a while. They feel very strongly passionate about having their prototypical sign, if you will. This sign is what has created a very good market for them. They've been successful with it. We rolled out the idea of maybe dropping their little logo that has the tree on it that represents the dollar. They frowned on it. So, we came back and we're going to ask Andover to look at this closely. Our building does sit back far from the road. I think when you look at the drawing proportionally on the building, I think the sign's fair. I don't think it's overbearing by no means. I think, again, it fits proportionally to the building. And it's extremely important to them folks to have a sign that they felt comfortable with, that's, that's gave them success. And I don't believe it's overbearing. So, with that, I'm open for questions.
Do they have their sign up without their logo on it anywhere else?
I, I cannot answer that, because I do not know that. From the conversation I had with the upper management, though, they were very persistent on having their logo with it, so...
And Les, just so everybody's aware, this will run with the land once this is approved, regardless of it's Dollar Tree or not. I think that's an important point to make sure everybody's clear on. That, you know, certainly this looks proportional for this business, in my opinion. That's an opinion, not a fact here. But, you know, it's something to consider, that the next person that comes into the space would, would have the same rights.
I wish that we would have done a drawing that showed the actual 5% and showed it to you guys, so you could compare it to what we've got up here. And then I think it would have showed that the 5% is very, very small on that building from the street, so...
True.
John, is this the same size of most other signs that they have in the market currently?
That's a good question. So, the center's got a variety of different types of signs. These types are like an individual letter to where a lot of the tenants have a box sign. But them box signs are about three foot tall, and they range from 10 to 12 feet wide. So, there's just a mixed variety of signs here on, on the building. So, I think it's comparable to Tuesday's, okay? But I, again, I'll go back to, I feel it's proportional to their space.
All right, let me, let me re-ask the question. Is, is it similar to what Dollar Tree has currently on their other facilities?
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood you. That's correct. It's very similar, prototypical, what they carry with all their stores.
Okay.
And you don't intend to come back and ask for a monument sign out on Andover Road later on, after this is approved?
I can guarantee 100%, we're not going to ask.
Okay, I didn't figure that was the case.
The elevation that you're showing here with the signage on it, is that the full width of the building? Is that the structure itself, or...
From my understanding, that is the storefront of the store. That's correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment.
Evening, my name's Roger Plachek. And I've had the pleasure of serving and doing business in Andover about 24 years. I remember when that tenant location was, Ed's IGA, and the drugstore line of Swimmer Hat on the corner. Tonight, I, I am a part-owner of, and a tenant in that Plaza Shopping Center. I do represent other tenants in that shopping center. And we are in opposition of this large sign. And I'm here tonight to kind of help you with the mathematics of actually how large this sign is going to be. Historically, that Plaza Shopping Center has had a sign panel provided. It's a, it's a box sign. It's 30 inches high on all tenants. And they're either eight foot long or 16. And I think there's some 10-foot ones, but I didn't measure them all. So, if you're familiar with these signs, these are 30 inches by eight foot long. And these are what the tenants are constrained to shoehorn their tagline and their logo into. These are 20 square feet of signage area. These signs are the 30-inch box by 16 feet long. There are 40 square feet of signage area. The top two signs, once again, are 30 inches by 16 feet long, 40 square feet of signage area. Now, Tuesday Morning is a different sign. It's a channel letter. And to the best that I could measure as a design engineer with a tape ruler on a windy Kansas day, that comes out to 85 square feet of area. So, if you relate Tuesday Morning's sign to the largest signs that have been provided and been constrained to the property owners or tenants, Tuesday Morning's sign is twice as big as the largest signs in the shopping center. Now, I've been provided this information by Dana on the Dollar Tree sign, and I ran some calculations. And the area of the Dollar Tree sign is 295 square feet. Once again, 295 square feet. So, how does that relate to the normal tenant signage these size? That is 14.8 times bigger. 14, almost 15 times as large. To the larger monument signs, the 16-footers, it's 7.4 times as big. To the larger monument signs, the 16-footers, it's 7.4 times as big. Is this out of character for this shopping center? I believe so. Is it visible from Andover Road, the Dollar Tree sign that's 295 square feet? Sure, it's visible from Andover Road. I think it's visible from the space station, actually. You've got to ask yourself, do we want this sign that big on one tenant in this shopping center and have to see that every day as we drive by and shop and do business in Andover, watch our car across the street, go to the bank, what have you? So, just trying to give you a comparison, 14.8 times larger than the normal tenant signs. So, as you vote tonight, I ask you this. Who are you representing in your vote? Are you representing the Plaza tenants and Andover residents? Or are you representing the management team of Dollar Tree, which is back east somewhere? Or are you representing the astronauts at the space station?
What is the proportion of their storefront to the size? Have you compared that proportion to the storefront and size of those, all those other tenant signs?
I have not, but the sign, just for example, this sign here, it's blank. And that storefront was just about the same size as Dollar Tree. But this storefront is vacant, has been vacant for a number of years, and you probably would remember that. It was called Dollar General. It's amazing they have the same word dollar in their name. And they were constrained to the 30-inch by 16-foot pan and didn't have a problem with it. So.
What's the dimension across the front of the tenant space versus this tenant space?
Of the Dollar General or the Tuesday morning?
Of the average tenant out there as opposed to this larger tenant?
I have no idea. I don't have that measurement.
I think that's what I'm concerned about is the proportionality of the size of the tenant versus-
Well, the Dollar Tree square footage is very similar to the square footage of Tuesday morning, which is really close to the square footage of the old Dollar General. I believe all those are in a range of about 1,000 square foot differential. I don't have the exact calculations. Figure's here. They're in the 8,000 to 10,000 square foot range. And the other tenants are anywhere from 1,500 to 3,000. But they, like I said, all these tenants have been constrained to this 30-inch lighted box and have had to shoehorn their logo and their tagline into that, and that was what they were restricted to. And then we're going to have this 295 square foot sign that is the only one sign in that shopping center, and it's going to be big. It's going to be very big and kind of obnoxious, in my opinion. But I'm just here to represent the math, basically.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, sir.
I've got a question for the applicant.
Okay.
They provided us with this drawing, and my question is, is that a box or are those individual letters?
Could you please come up to the mic? Thank you.
The 295 square feet is the perimeter of what you see there in white around the letters.
That would be the only way I would see how he figured that because when you draw a square around the logo and the letters itself, it's not that amount.
I did that calculation months ago, working with the sign company from somewhere back east. And I think that's where he got that 295 square feet, was measuring-
Well, it's close because it's 40 by 7, almost 8 feet.
Yes, that's exactly what-
It's 280.
295 square feet.
As far as the box out is concerned.
The white space.
Yeah.
Right, the white space, but the letters are considerably less than that.
Yeah, I think that's a notable, notable thing to discuss here.
So, John, does the sign then, does it include the white space, or do these letters stand off and independent of themselves?
They're independent of themselves.
So it's just lettering, it's not the white box around it?
That's correct. The white box around it is part of the structure.
Les, so the letters for the other facility, the other other companies that are in there, are they all 30 inches?
I don't know those exact dimensions. I know there is kind of a standard box. I'm going to do a little quick math here to give you an idea of what the area of the letters is, which is the standard that's applied, not that whole white box down area.
From my understanding, being in the business a little while and dealing with the center, the whole idea with the boxes initially from the owner was make everybody even and just make it simple. And so when I dealt with them, it was, he provided this box and they slid the lens in. But his theory was, wasn't necessarily proportion or size, it was more of make it simple. And he also, the other thing from my understanding was, was putting channel letters up and taking them down creates holes in the fascia. So it's kind of a maintenance thing that it's an expense that you have to, when somebody moves out, they don't take care of it. He does. So the idea of the boxes was put a box up there, hopefully it sufficed, and it's there forever and there's no maintenance after the person leaves. So it was more done as a convenience than it was a proportional decision.
I think the calculation is just the letters itself. Not at 295, at 129.7 per the letter that's provided.
I come up with 117 square feet, just the letters and the circle.
And not to go against my case, but I think if this was studied hard, it's going to come out to 128.7.
128.7.
Sorry, Les, but-
What's the height of the letters themselves?
The height of the letters-
Three and a half feet.
I don't have my glasses, Chuck. Do you have yours?
Oh, there it is, okay.
Forty-two inches.
Thank you, my assistant, but 42 inches on the logo and 36 on the letters.
And this is just a green lit sign?
It's an LED lighted, individual, green lit sign. That's correct. And Les, the difference might be, is drawing that, did you draw a box around the entire sign or did you draw a box around each individual? How'd you do that? Which I think legally you-
If that's the case, the actual area is 7.46%. Not 17.10%. So it's 2.5% larger than the allowable.
I think for a sake of quantifying and percentages is not really all that beneficial to me. I think if we're going to hear this, we need to be more thinking about a set square footage as max as opposed to a percentage of-
The regulations are set up in a percentage.
Well, it seems, in this case, where we're adding a percent above, I think it's going to be easier to calculate and manage from a regulatory standpoint to just list with a square footage. So, I think for sake of us all trying to do math on our calculators here, I think it might be a little easier for us that way. But I think the facts stand that the sign is 3 and 1/2 foot tall, if you can just confer with us here, and the sign is roughly 37 feet long.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
And not the white area behind it.
Roughly 128, 129 square feet.
That's correct when you add it all together.
All right.
And the letters are 36 inches.
The letters are 36, the logo is 42.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment at this time? In that case, we'll close the public comments. Any further deliberation up here? Any comments, concerns with what we've seen?
No, it makes a big difference for me knowing that it's just the lettering and not the white backing.
Right. And that's, I mean, I deal with some signage in business and it's customary that the sign is calculated based on the advertising space, not the back, you know.
The backdrop?
So, I think we'd be better to limit it on what they truly absolutely need for this case, whether they reconfigure the sign to be more compact or whatever.
Sure.
As truly a, you know, nationwide brand, they shouldn't need, you know, to have as big of a sign as they're asking for, in my opinion.
Okay.
If they have the brand recognition, you know.
Do you guys care what they look like anywhere else?
Yeah.
I do care about signage.
That's one without the logo, though.
And they stacked, they stacked it without the logo. Sure. Thank you for this. Okay. Any more?
It'd be 3 and 1/2 by 3 and 1/2.
Yeah, another-
The applicant has provided us a dimension of 129.7 square feet.
Total.
Right. That's what they're-
He was asking if you got rid of the logo. The logo, it's another 3 and 1/2 by 3 and 1/2.
That would remove about 12, 13 square feet.
One of my concerns is that this site's been vacant for so, so long and while I might not be a, Dollar Tree may not be my cup of tea, but I certainly, I like the idea of businesses coming to our community and I, you know, that's my kind of baseline here as far as my thought process. I do think it seems reasonable for the facade and the, I'm glad that they're not asking for monument signage out front because I think if you had the tenant signage back here, it is going to be large. But signage is very important to commercial real estate. And it's, if not one of the, probably the number, one or two things that is very important. But those are my anecdotal comments here. Any other, any other comments? Okay. We'll proceed to go through checklist. And I just thought I'd check, do we have any disqualifications?
No.
No disqualifications, no conflicts of interest. Okay. I declare that we have a quorum and we also have no conflicts of interest. Notifications, according to our recording secretary, a notice of this hearing was published in the Butler County Times Gazette on May 27, 2017. And notices were mailed to the applicant and 32 owners of record of real property in the area of notification on May 24, 2017. The record shows that at least 20 days has elapsed between the publication and the mailing date and the hearing date. Unless there's any evidence to the contrary from anyone in the present, I'll declare that proper notification has been given. And has anybody had any ex parte communication with the applicant or property owners? Okay. And so we have seven factors here. Ask you to review them individually here and then we'll ask to help fill out the appropriate box here. So it looks like the same, to me, it looks like six and five. To vary the applicable regulations of section 10, 107, C1 through 5, and above conjunction with the conditional use application for, well, no, that one, sorry. It's the number five.
Five.
Yeah, just to vary the applicable dimension, dimensional sign provision of section 7, 102 regarding general standards and section 7, 104 regarding the district regulations, so. Based on the application, this request meets the criteria for number five of the above pertaining to our case, BZA, 2017 dash 04. So we're looking to grant a variance. And we think it needs to be approved as requested or modified or conditional. Those are our choices here. Keep getting out of order there. Forget I got to jump over to this other page. So we have a few conditions here. And does the evidence demonstrate that the, one, particular physical surrounding shape and topographical condition of the specific property involved should result in a practical difficulty, unnecessary hardship upon the owner, lessee, or occupant as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the provisions of these regulations were literally enforced. Because the tenant space requesting variance is larger than the wall or is a portion of what the former anchor, Ed's IGA, which occupied four tenant spaces, the tenant have often complained about the visibility because the shopping center is located approximately 350 feet from the street. The existing marquee sign at the entrance is occupied by a mere many tenants, so the area allotted to each tenant is very small. Does anybody agree with that?
Yes.
We have concurrents on the board, okay. Number two, the request for a variance is not based exclusively upon the desire of the owner, lessee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property. And I think for the same reasons above. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yep, okay, everybody's saying yes. And number three, the granting of, uh, will not materially detriment, be detrimental or injurious to other properties or improvements in the neighboring, neighborhood of which the subject property is located. I think that's a little bit debatable, possibly, based on some of the testimony. But I, I don't know that I can say to what degree they're injured. It seems, seems they may be benef- benefited as well if there's more traffic in the area.
True, yes.
So, I think, uh, for the reasons we previously stated, but also because there could be more traffic uh, to the, to the, to the subject property. And number four is proposed variance will not impair the adequate supply of light or air to the adjacent property, substantially increase congestion on the public streets or roads, increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety or substantially diminish or impair the property values when the neighborhood. And I think because the wall signage is in proportion with the size of the building, I think that's, that is a key statement in this case. See if everybody agrees to that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now we have some specific conditions to be met. Uh, we have five, five factors. Uh, the variance requested arise of such condition which is unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, which is not created by an action or, or actions of the property owner or applicant. I think, uh, the, the primary deciding factor here is this, this property is so, located so far off the end of a road at three hundred fifty feet. And, uh, the subject property also has remained vacant for, uh, some time and it's been advertised that this is a reason why it has been vacant.
Yes.
I think that's a valid reasoning. Uh, number two. The granting of this variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners. And I think, again, because it's in proportion to the size and the, and the number of tenant spaces that they're, they're taking up. Everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, the strict application of the provisions of these regulations from which the variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner requested in the application. And I think for all the reasons we've talked about above, uh, this is, uh. Number four, the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Uh, I think because again, that the size of the sign is in proportion to the building, it's not gonna be a safety hazard. Number five, and last one, the granting of the variance, uh, desired will not, uh, be opposed to the general spirit of intent of these regulations. This facility was conceived a long time ago, uh, the, the signage was smaller than. I think today's needs may be a bit different than yesterday's needs and I think the tenant space being requested is in proportion to the size of the tenant. And it is located three hundred fifty feet off the street. And they have, uh, I think it, it's a better suited sign than having a large, single tenant sign on the street uh, as opposed to having a wall, wall sign there. So we've, we've heard some issues with the size of the sign. I think that's probably something that needs to be addressed, um, in a motion. I think that's, we need to cap it on a square foot, probably. So, are there any motions? There's some debate whether we should have the logo on there or not.
Mm-hmm. That's my issue.
Yeah.
He's shown that, they've shown that they have used it before without a logo. And there's concern with the existing tenants.
Mm-hmm.
That is a legitimate concern.
Mm-hmm.
With the box out, it looks like a big sign. Whether, that's not how, I know that's not how we measure it, but.
Mm-hmm.
That's my issue. I'd be willing to modify it without the logo and approve it that way.
I think that seems more reasonable too.
Pardon me?
I think that seems more reasonable.
Mm-hmm, yeah, some concession there from the national tenant.
It would reduce the square footage as well.
Right.
Mm-hmm. And/or the percentage.
I think it's gonna, in this case, I think it's gonna be easier for us to quantify the logo and the, the size of that based on the information we have. So if anybody has a notion of what they think that logo is, I think we discussed a bit.
With the logo included, I get seven point seven seven percent.
With it.
With it included.
Yes, with it included.
And without it?
With it not included, what was, what do you come with?
We, we don't have that, uh, what's on the screen there. I wonder if someone could read us off, uh, what the dimensions are of the, of the Dollar Tree and the space between the Dollar Tree. I think if we had those dimensions, we could quantify fairly easily because we don't have that.
The, the circle is eleven square feet and the gap is eighteen inches by three.
Okay, you have better eyes than me.
So, that would be four and a half, sixteen and a half square feet.
Okay, so we need to take his number that he gave us and subtract sixteen and a half square feet.
One twenty.
So it's one twelve. One third. I think we just, maybe one hundred and thirteen square feet.
That would be six point seven eight percent.
Okay.
Without the logo.
Without the logo.
Okay, we're sticking with the percentage, I think. But, uh.
Sherry's phone lets me take that down to about twelve digits, so if you need.
I see that.
Android.
Well.
Six point seven what?
Six point seven eight.
Six point seven eight without the logo. Seven point seven seven with the logo.
And so as far as proportional square footage, that equals roughly a hundred and thirteen square feet?
A hundred and thirteen point two is what I used.
Okay, let's just, let's just keep, leave it at one thirteen, okay? So, we have a, a square footage of a hundred and thirteen square feet or six point seven percent. Alright, so we got, got some modification to do.
Being modified based upon the total square footage of signage being six point seven eight percent.
Right.
Thirteen, thirteen, hundred and thirty square, hundred and thirteen square.
Yep, yep, and based on their, uh, our findings and, and from our testimony brought to us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact in the variance report as amended have been found to exist that support all the five conditions set out in section ten dash one zero seven D one of the zoning regulations and KSA twelve dash seven five nine E of the state statutes, which are necessary for granting of a variance, I, William Schnaber, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA V two zero one seven dash zero four as modified, based on this evening's testimony and findings, putting a limit of one hundred and thirteen square feet, six point seven eight percent to the signage area.
Mm-hmm, building signage area.
Building signage area.
And, and that is limited to the eastern, uh, sorry, western facade?
The building.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the motion passes. And we have some closing remarks. Again, a resolution will be paired and made available to the applicant by June thirtieth of this year. If anyone is aggrieved by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you. Alright, we're making progress.
Glad that wasn't seventeen percent.
Yeah.
It's a slight difference, okay. So we have some more signage to get through here. This is item number nine, it's BZA case V twenty seventeen dash zero five. It's a public hearing on application filed by Trax LLC in the requesting a variance to permit a fifteen-foot increase in the required ten-foot, uh, maximum height limitation to allow construction of a new twenty-five-foot high monument sign on properties owned as B three, Central Shopping District, uh, located at, uh, five sixty-five, South Andover Road. And staff is of the opinion that the proposed twenty-five-foot, uh, pole sign is out of character for the surrounding and that the hardship of not having visible sign, uh, I'm sorry, I'll make sure that I read that right. Is, is out of character for the surrounding and that the hardship of not having visibility from US fifty-four four hundred perceived by the owner was created by selection of the location, not by the condition unusual to the property. And would be a direct conflict with the intent and purpose with the zoning regu- regulations to promote compatibility with the surrounding area. Okay. We have. We have some aerial maps, location. We have a letter.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we have some photos of, uh, the adjacent property.
It's on the other side of the street, yep.
Large multi-tenant signs and then a smaller multi-tenant sign. Alright. So everybody had a chance to kind of digest what's in front of us here?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, Les, do you have anything to share with us before we review this?
I just included those photos to give you an idea of the signage in the, in the area. The sign that Craig has up on the video now is the development sign. As you can see, it has, uh, seven different tenants in it. It's thirty feet tall.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the, the major development sign for a seventy-acre commercial site.
Mm-hmm.
To the left side of that photo is the ten-foot monument sign that's allowed in that zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
So it kind of gives you an idea of, of what's allowed in the area, uh, the major tenant sign. And that major tenant sign is in about the same proportion as the requested sign for the car wash, single user.
So we've got a height that he's asking for, what's the square footage that he needs or do we, he didn't tell us that?
In, in this case, we're strictly looking at the height variance.
Okay. Usually height has a, a width as well. You can quantify a dimension.
Is there any proposed signage that he is indicating?
Yeah. Come on up here. Take Les off the hot seat.
There you go.
Alright, good evening, Phil Meyer with Baughman Company. Uh, with me here tonight is Stan and Steve Cox, who are the, gonna be the owners and operators of Trax Car Wash. Also here is, uh, John with Ron Signs, in case you got specific questions about the signage. And if he had more, I'm on my own. Help us, I'm gonna pass these out for you. Hey, this answers some questions.
So, we are requesting an increase in the height, in the, uh, sign height allowed for this. We, we have gone through zoning and the conditional use permit to allow the car wash. We have been through the site plan review committee. We do have approval of a ten-foot high sign. Um, from all marketing standpoints, car washes typically operate with a larger sign than a ten-foot sign. Half, and that generally, half of the people that stop at a car wash, it's an impulse thing. They're sitting at the intersection or they're driving down the road and go, hey, I need to wash my car. And whip in there and do that. Half of their customers leave the house that day and go, hey, I need to get my car washed today. So, there, this is a type of business where impulse has a play. And with that impulse, the signage, um, that we need comes into play. A ten-foot sign with a car driving down the road is, and you're sitting, the intersection's half-covered. So being able to get that above that ten-foot leaves a visual perspective for people to be able to see that. Um, I'm glad Les put that photograph up there. Him and I were playing phone tag and, and I had a couple of questions on that that at least this will help us. The other one I was gonna ask you about, Les, and that you may or may not know, do you know how tall the Spangles sign is? I'm guessing it's fifteen's my guess, but it's kind of a guess on, kind of a guess on my part. Um, and so Spangles is, is sitting a little bit north of this. So what I'm handing out to you to look at, um, there's four pages here. The first page is the requests that we made at twenty-five foot. And we started at thirty foot because that's what the industry tells them they need to do is a thirty-foot sign. Um, we talked about it, we visited, I know Les' position on the signage. I know the height of the sign there at the Derby Marketplace, which is thirty foot. Yeah, okay, let's pull that, rein that back a little bit and there's a twenty-five-foot high sign on the first sheet. The second sheet is the same signage, but more of a monument style and that's not a pole sign. We're gonna wrap the base of that a little bit, gives it a little bit more character. Pies it down a little bit more, in my, my opinion, as an option. And then in conversation before we filed this, I know Les had brought up, if you go north of Kellogg on Andover Road, at the first strip center there, they have a multi-tenant sign that's about seventeen foot height. And it is similar distance away from the intersection than, as to what we are. And so, I, I asked the applicant and they had the sign company draw up an option where here's, here's an example of one that's here's, here's an example of one that's seventeen-foot-high. Here today, we'd like to ask you for the twenty-five that we filed. I'm also open to discussion. I know it's been a long night and I know you don't want a long, hard discussion, but if you have a problem with the twenty-foot-high sign, seventeen, twenty, somewhere in the middle of that, something so that when you're sitting at the intersection and you look south and there's cars driving in the road, you can look over the top of those cars and grab that sign. So that photo is, helps me the most. The Dillon sign's thirty-foot-high. The Cap Fed sign is ten-foot-high. If there was a car traveling down the street in front of that Cap Fed sign, you wouldn't see it. And that, and that's the, that's the point we're trying to make is it's just not going to be visible, that ten-foot-high monument sign, until you get to the face of the business. And so, you think you want me to add past that before we open for discussion? All right. With that, I think I'll, I will turn it back over to you and let you ask any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Well?
I have a question for Les. The Brahms sign, do you know, is it, what, do you know the height of the Brahms sign? Would it be fair to say it's probably in the fifteen range? Not sure.
I'm clueless. I can tell you that the sign at the Dunkin' Donuts location has a variance and it was just over seventeen feet. It's also just outside of that range of the highway that would allow a taller sign as
No, I'm not, not in favor of the twenty-five-foot.
Yeah.
Sign at all, for a single business.
Yeah, for a single business, it's bigger than the Dillon sign next door. That has multi-companies in it.
Yeah, I think it, I, I echo everybody's sentiments there. I think it's, while it might seem appropriate if you're on a highway, this is not a highway, this is an, this is a collector, arterial street, Andover Road. So I'm, I kind of would agree with everything that was said there.
And the other issue is another LED signage on there as well.
Yeah, I think LED signage is here to stay.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt that.
It's a, it's a better way of communicating it in a lot of, in a lot of different ways. I mean, that's arguable, of course, but I, I think it's important to express the, the square footage as well in the same conversation because while height is important, so is square footage, and I think proportions are important as well, so. I, I like the smaller wrapped sign. I think it's the last, the last one he provided us as a, as an example of what would be possible.
Option four.
I think it, I, I do think it'd be a successful sign to the, to the market. I mean, presently, the si- the site is a grass field, so certainly, you know, signage that automatically appears there is, is certainly going to grab people's attention, not to mention, I presume there'll be building signage on this as well, just like the Cap Fed has building signage. There's a little bit of building signage. Yeah. It's not, it's not maxed out by any means, but yes, there is building signage and it's, it's at the easterly side of the building. I vaguely recall maybe some colors that are, exterior colors, are they going to be yellow and, or these, these high-impact colors on the building itself? I know we're not talking about that tonight, but it is somewhat. Red and silver stick in my mind as some primary colors. Some, some gray panels, all of it's metal panel stuff, but the colors were not very vibrant. Okay. There was some red in there and there was some dark grays and some light grays. Yeah. There might have been a little bit of yellow. I don't, I didn't bring my building elevation with me, but.
So the theme of the building doesn't match the sign?
Well, I don't think he necessarily said that.
You don't necessarily have to, but.
Hello, my name's Stan Cox. I'm a little colorblind on buildings, so that's why I was asking with the exact description of it, but our location in Derby, we bought the property from QuickTrip and they did not want the building to stand out. And so we, we did not use bright colors on that building and we'll do the same thing in Andover. They're going to pretty much just match each other. So the, the sign that you see here is same color and design that we have in Derby. And I want to add also, on the LED board, we'll shut that off at night when we close. That's only turned on when we're open. So if we can get a taller sign allowed, I just want to let you know the LED sign will be turned off at night when we close. Thank you.
Do we have anything that shows the location of the sign on the property at this moment?
I can tell you, can you put your face? It sits at the northeast corner of the site. This is where we proposed the sign in the site plan review approval. Yeah, so for our, our site there, we're at the northeast corner of that. And our driveway lines up with the access across the street. Any other questions for applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we have a little more testimony.
For the record, again, I'm John Sanon with Ron Sign Company. Okay? So it's a little unique, our property, and certainly Stan, Stan selected the site. Nobody else encouraged him to select the site. He did that himself. The idea of a car wash to survive is twofold. When I was strategizing the signs, one, if we do a good job, we can get the local people. We kill them with kindness, their car looks nice, we didn't damage it, we can get the local people, it's not a problem. He does a great job in Derby. Good reputation. So that'll probably pay the bills and I don't know how much profit it's going to generate. Somehow, some way, if we can get, some way to read off the interstate that it's a car wash, is what we're asking here, folks. We don't need the biggest sign in the world, we just need a way that if you look over there and you're at the intersection, if we have a chance that they see that we're a car wash and there, and you know that road is traveled by a lot of different cities and municipalities, not just Andover, we would like to have some of that business that's important to us. And that's why our, our main spirit intent is not to blow up the world with a big sign, it's simply to grab some attention, just enough to be effective to let them know that we have a car wash over there. Okay? All right, thank you.
Well, we, we certainly appreciate having the visual aid here. I think it helps a lot. So I applaud you for that. Like to hear any, any other comments or concerns from our board here, I guess. I need to probably just make sure there's no one else in the audience that would like to speak on this as far as a public hearing. If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yeah, I'd like to hear any other thoughts and concerns on this case.
The sign is really impactful, like just the design of it and everything. I think it gets the point across really well.
I think the option for the monument sign at seventeen feet does, and the wrapped pole is more appropriate for its location. And if they do a good enough job, people will know about them anyway.
I do understand their concern for Kellogg, but I, you know, I know it's a long, long range, but long range, Kellogg's going to be underground. I do think, you know, certainly if the, they could have located it on Kellogg if they wanted that better visibility, but I, I do think that, you know, word, word spreads and, you know, Green Lantern's no longer there, I think this will be a successful car wash, one way or the other, in my opinion, but.
I agree.
I, I have some expertise in the matter and, you know, having looked at a lot of commercial signs and I, I'm of the impression that, you know, I think if you run the, the calcs on, on that seventeen-foot-tall one, the one we're all talking about, the wrapped one, option four, it should calculate out to square, sixty square feet. I've found that, you know, ninety square feet along a arterial road is, is nice, but I'm not in favor of a super-tall sign like they got. I think something in more of the range of seventeen to fifteen feet would be reasonable and I think that mimics what's been done at Spangles and then it sounds like.
Brahms.
Brahms or, or even the Dunkin' Donuts up there. So I think, I think in keeping with, you know, the neighborhood and the character, I think that's where we should be looking at and, you know, if they don't need ninety square feet, well, certainly there's really no reason to give them ninety square feet, but I think, I like, I like the idea of them going hand-in-hand, the height and the square footage. This is a BZA case that's specific to the site. The site has specific characteristics and I think it would be good to, to recognize So while you guys are thinking, I'm going to go ahead and go through some housekeeping items here, keep things rolling. Again, have we had any, any disqualifications on this item? Okay. I'll go ahead and read the notification. According to the recording secretary, a notice for this hearing was published in the Butler County Times Gazette on May twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen, and notices were mailed in, to the applicant and eleven owners of record of real property in the area of notification on May twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen. The record shows that at least twenty days has elapsed between the publication and the mailing dates and the hearing date. Unless there's evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I'll declare that proper, proper notification has been given. And has there been any ex parte communication on this case with anybody?
No.
Okay. And none here either. Heard the public comment, seen written communication. We've closed the public hearing. We need to look at some items here for deliberation. I think again, it's five.
Five, yes.
So based on the application, this request meets the criteria for number five above pertaining to BZA case V two thousand seventeen dash five. Now we're here, determine if there's evidence to support the case. We, we've heard the applicant, he desires to have a twenty-five-foot-tall sign, which is some seven hundred feet away from Kellogg or US fifty-four. So the, the particular physical surroundings, shape and topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a, a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon the, the owner, leasing or occupant to dis- as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the provisions of these regulations were literally enforced. And I don't, I guess there's a perceived hardship from the applicant, but I think there's a hardship for the community as well, if we went quite, quite as big as they're suggesting.
Yep.
And I think there's existing highway lots that are, would be better suited for the large signage. So I think those are two good points to make. Number two, the request for variance is not based on exclusively upon the desire of the owner or leasing or occupant and applicant to make more money out of the property. I think they would desire to achieve more visits and, and would generate more revenue if they had more highway traffic, but I don't know that, that would be, I think they, they need to be a little closer to the highway if, if that were, if that were the, the issue. Number three, the granting of the variance will not materially be detrimental or injurious to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. I think we are all unanimous on a proposed twenty-five-foot-high pole sign would be a little out of scale with the neighboring community, neighboring community across the street as well as up and down Andover Road. And number four, the proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air adjacent to the property substantially increase congestion, public streets or roads, increase danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish, impair the property values within the neighborhood. I think it's debatable whether there would be a hardship to the neighborhood. I think, me personally, I think it could be a hardship if you had one sign that was a little bit proportionally larger, especially for the, the size of the, the lot as well. I mean, if we did that for every lot along Andover Road, it would become to look like a, some kind of highway business district. So I think we would be harming ourselves as far as setting a precedent.
I agree.
Okay. So we've reviewed those first four items and now specific conditions. The variance requested arises from such conditions that are unique to the property in question, which are not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and are not created by an action or act, or actions of the property owner or applicant. Of course, the applicant desires to put a twenty-five-foot-high pole sign and it's over seven hundred feet away from the highway. And I don't see there being a hardship in this circumstance. Everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. I think we've already covered that, that yes, we think that it could be injurious to other rights of the neighboring properties because if you have one big sign, you're probably not going to get two big signs right next to each other, so. Everybody agree there? Number three, the strict application of the provisions of these regulations from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. I think for all the reasons we've echoed above, I don't think there's a hardship here.
No.
Number four, the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. I think this is just in general out, out of, not in keeping with, uh, with what is being done to date and what, what our goals are for the Andover Road corridor. Everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay. Number five, the granting of the variance will desire, uh, for the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations. I think, uh, Les made a, a good point at the beginning, it is in, in opposition to our, uh, intent of these regulations, so. And there's nearby properties that are much larger and, and that don't have such a, a massive sign, that are, have multiple, multiple tenants. Okay. I think there's some cause for providing a, a modified request here. They have provided us some examples. So...
Seventeen-foot monument sign.
We'll entertain a motion, uh, to, as requested or modified or, or just flat out not grant the variance.
I'll make a motion. Having considered the evidence in the hearing and determined that the findings and facts in the variance report have been found to exist in support of all five conditions set in section ten dash one oh seven D one of the zoning regulations of KSA twelve dash seven five nine E of the state statutes, which are necessary to grant a, grant, for granting of a variance. I, Mike Warrington, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA. And this will be as amended variance report. Variance for case number BZA, uh, V two thousand seventeen is, um, point oh five, is modified with seventeen-foot monument sign, as shown on diagram, that's seven foot by ten, seven foot by five foot, ten inches. Is there anything else we want to add?
Is there another?
I think it'd be beneficial to, to cap a square footage.
And this one was sixty?
I think that calculates out to sixty square feet. I think it's reasonable to, to give them some room to modify that if, if, uh, if they need to in the future.
Yep. So we want to add sixty square feet to the modification as well?
Um, I think we were thinking we would give them a little bit more than sixty square feet should they need to modify it, but it's your motion.
Okay.
The sixty gets us...
Sixty gets them exactly what they have presented.
In option four.
In option four, yeah. And I, I think it'd be reasonable to give them a little bit more grace since we're not get, I mean, we're, we obviously don't want to give them the whole twenty-five foot, but if they wanted to get a little bit more visibility, I think they could achieve that with a little bit bigger sign, and that was the thought process and maybe not, not, maybe not go into ninety square feet, but maybe go to eighty square feet or something a little bigger than sixty square feet that they proposed there.
I don't know that I'm in agreement with that. I...
Okay.
They're the ones that came up with the...
Okay.
This is, yeah.
The proposal.
I like, I like...
I like the look of that sign, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
If you're gonna give them an option, they're gonna go taller.
Okay.
Yep.
Why, yeah, I think that the square footage is what I was talking about, width, width wise.
So I'll keep my, uh, motion as same.
Caped at sixty square feet.
Capped at sixty square feet.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have any substitute motions or is that sufficient?
I believe so. I'll second it.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. We have a little bit of housekeeping. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant on, by June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen. If anyone has agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Okay, we have made it through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I would entertain a, a, a motion recess and close the Board of Zoning Appeals and recess with the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the boarding, the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the planning, Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. And all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Does anybody need a break?
Yes.
How about that? Yeah, I'll do...
Did anyone need to make a motion to take a break?
Can we do a, a motion for a, like, five-minute or, or less break here?
Yes.
We have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, we'll get this meeting finished out yet tonight. Okay, we have, looks like we have number 10 to go through, which is our Andover Unified Development Manual Update from Foster Design and Associates. They're here, and let's go over that.
One more time on baby foster, fostering nine children, particularly foster, foster associate, care foster, foster nine children. Keyword is update. Long meeting, so that's what we want to get done. If you are new to stuff and things like that, you do have time for a long period. Just a broad overview. We've broken three hundred pages in the document, so it's not an easy read, let's put that way. But we're going to end this up with a few little ones. Number one, we're going to talk a little bit about the site plan review criteria and standards. Two, we're going to look at subdivision regulations, and then three, we want to talk a little bit about the sub. But it's really all the same types.
Good.
Before we get out of the gate here, though, we've not brought anything to project because you all should have received in your packet. I think we made sure that you got the site plan review, um, and stuff in there. And we did get a list from which you can come in business, and then you actually got the table.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Let's start with the site plan review. You know, a lot of information that you synthesize, I know that's a pretty big thing. But we figured we could cut out, what, twenty, thirty percent?
What is four documents? That's one.
So, you know, thirty percent reduction in the breadth of information, but we found there's a lot of repetition of that. And one reason for that is you had your initial criteria set up, but then you started running into more detailed, prescriptive things related to landscaping, site plans on it, and your lighting and things, things we talked about this evening. Those all got set up in their own document, and now all that is new. The key thing I want to mention to you, um, you come from the zone, like your normal time, you know? And that sets up the ability to do that, and have a site plan review committee. But the key to you all is, all of this documentation and the standards come back to you for review because you have to provide a recommendation. Mind working on that?
I don't think that it's been recorded.
Oh, there we go.
Read means go.
Okay. We're going.
So you need to provide a recommendation for these standards to the governing body. So you've got a lot of, you pull a lot of weight in this process before the governing body has an opportunity to approve and put into action for the Site Plan Review Committee. And, you know, the thing that I appreciate, and the longer you stay in the process of these things, is you begin to realize there's a fairness to it. And if you think about this, the fairness is that you all are involved, the public is involved through the process itself, as well as the public being involved at the governing body level. You know, they're representatives of the public, so it's a fair process. That's all we've got on site plan review information for you unless you've got some specific things that you want to look at in here. But otherwise, that, we're ninety-five percent done with this. We're just now tinkering with references and things like that and that. This portion of it is really pulled together. The Site Plan Review Committee did their job well, and it took just two meetings with them. They understand this stuff really well, and so they were able to help give us direction to finalize it in just two meetings.
The only question I have is, you know, recently there was a case that got brought before, that was previously approved, and they got approved again, and they got re-proved conditions, and then it came back and got approved again. So what have we done to reconcile that procedure of approval upon approval versus, you know, once you've, once you've gotten resubmitted, is it, is the old case nullified and the new cases is, what have we done to that regard?
The timing of that happening was very important.
Yeah, it was great.
It was just, just the right timing to have it happen. So the committee actually discussed that. And what is in here now is, I believe it's five years less, tell me if I'm wrong. But if after that five-year period that something's not happened, then it's all a new ballgame. They've got to come back and resubmit things.
And if they come in and resubmit before that five years is up, I guess are they, does the applicant, the new application supersede and replace the original application?
If they're doing a new application, then yes. But if they're still at the same application, they're fine.
Okay, as long as it's clear that that, you know, that
Yes.
that that supersedes and replaces any previous approvals.
We'll double-check the, but that was the intent of what was drafted.
Okay, very well.
Any other questions on the site plan standards? Okay, on the, on the subdivision regulations, Beckley's going to give you just a brief description of the statutes and the legal things that have changed over time that you just haven't gotten around to updating your regulations. So he's going to talk about that, and then Deborah's going to talk about the organization of the subdivision regulations. Beckley?
Okay, to begin with, Dana, back some time ago, inserted all the five amendments you all have made in the last twenty years. So they're now in the material you have. And in nineteen ninety-seven, the state statutes began to be changed. I remember very well, I was on the committee for eight years. Took that long to do it. And one of the things they, they did was vesting. And there's only been one other change in the statute. So there's only two changes in the whole statute that affect your subdivision regulations. Vesting, we had the home builders come, and they wanted to be guaranteed that if they recorded a plat, that you wouldn't be changing the regulations on them, and they'd have to change their lot size or whatever in the meanwhile. And so for fi, anytime that you had a plat recorded for a single-family district, for five years, they were vested. And let me just ask what vesting means. It doesn't mean that they go out and start to water in the sewer and the streets. They can do that. They have to build something taxable. So they have to start a house or something to have it count as starting the five years. Now, in two thousand and nine, they changed that to ten years. So anything that has come in since the two thousand and nine is vested for ten years, even if they don't build anything till the last day. They're vested to build it. And that one will be put in your new material. One of the things we did was clarify for the sketch plans, the preliminary and final plats, is how many copies you get. It clarifies how many are required to come in, be submitted. And also, with less ideas, it has thirty days now for all of the submittals, for each of the sketch plan, the preliminary, and final. Thirty days prior to that. Now, you recall that fifteen days of those are something they can send the electric company, the telephone company, whatever, and they have fifteen days in which to respond. So you have a little bit more relaxed system here, but to get it done. One of the things that you're very aware of is that when you have architects and other people appear before you here, they're always called professional architects, professional landscape architects, professional engineers. Surveyors have never been called that, and they got very upset about it. And about a year ago, they went to the state and says, why aren't we professionals? So all through your book, in about six different places where the signature is, instead of land surveyor, you'll see a professional surveyor. All words, they register at the state level and become licensed professional surveyors. And that'll be throughout your book now. Deborah's going to check the county sanitary stand, code, to make sure that they haven't changed anything that is in your book in regard to the lot sizes for septic tanks and all those things. Now, since the books were made, like twenty, in fact, I first wrote them in the seventies. It still required you to do it in black ink and so forth. Now, all of these will be digital materials that they submit. And then when they submit the final recorded plat, it'll be in a digital form that will help match your mapping system. So it automatically will fit into it, so to speak. So all that will be in the new material. Rick has been helping us with the storm drain, and I'm going to ask Deborah, you want to comment on what Rick has been giving us and so forth?
Rick Lansarath has, has been working on stormwater management regulations for the city. What he will be working on mostly addresses pre-construction and post-construction, sedimentation and, and water quality. What will still be retained in the zoning and subdivision will be more focused on drainage and grading and trying to make sure that the subdivision as a whole works as a drainage system to manage stormwater appropriately. So overall, in this entire process for the UDM, we've been trying to consolidate information so that when someone wants to do a development, they can go to one place and find everything they need about that particular topic. And we're succeeding in that a lot, but there are some places where we have to split it out, and, and the stormwater management is one of them. It's, it's going to be two places, but that's still better than it was before when we had eight or ten places people might have to go to to look to get all the information they needed.
The second item I mentioned to you that the state statute changed was, and all the surveyors do it for you, they just know to do it. It's not in your book. But it requires the county surveyor, or their designated surveyor, to review all the survey materials and see if they meet the state statute. So that's in your book, even though all of them know to do that anyway. Now, probably the largest change that will occur legally in your book is that the state statute allows you to have a vacation procedure where either the governing body holds a public hearing, or the planning commission has a choice. And up to now, the planning commission has not been holding the public hearing because there was nothing in the book requiring it. But you all had a, had a meeting to have input from the public and gave a recommendation to the governing body. But it was not the legal public hearing. The governing body still had to hold the public hearing and make the final four decisions that the state law requires. So this now will be put in, it ought to be, you all ought to do it. I'm sure the council would prefer that anyway. So twenty days' notice will be given to everybody that's affected, including the utilities. And this thing will come to you for a formal hearing. And there are four state, four items in the state law, basically, that you need to decide, just like tonight you were doing five for the BZA, you'll have four automatically that you have to go over for the vacations. And then that'll be sent to the governing body for their final decision, just like zoning does. The last thing was what the committee discussed yesterday to staff, and I'm going to ask Deborah to comment on it. But you have, in the process of doing the zoning regulations, the city adopted a separate set of ordinances, or ordinance, that had a lot of street standard on it. Wits and rights-of-way and all that. That's what you've been following. So now we're talking about incorporating it.
There were some street design standards in the subdivision regulations, and there was the city's street policy, which largely addressed funding and assessments, but also had a fair number of street design standards and roadway design standards in there. What we are working on doing is pulling all the street design information out of the assessment ordinance. It will be in the subdivision regulations, and the, there will be a new ordinance that will strictly address how streets get paid for, instead of how they're designed. It, for a couple of reasons, it's not only going to be simpler for developers to use, I think, but it will also simplify your implementation on the, on the assessments as well.
Are there any questions relating to the subdivision regulations? It's an exciting topic.
So does that mean that site plan, site plan review will be coming to the planning and zoning?
No.
No. It's still a stand, standalone committee. But all those standards have to, you have to approve what they are using to review any case that comes to them.
That's in the state statute that the planning commission has to give the standards to the site plan review committee.
On page thirty-eight, the easement section, we frequently have vacation cases for easements. The one along the lot lines or side lot lines, I think it would be at least five feet, or half of what it, you know, is listed here at ten feet. Because we do have some where they straddle the lot line, and so it's a total of ten feet. And then there's some instances where, you know, West Star says, hey, we only have a light pole down there. We don't need a, it's not primary, it's secondary line. All we need is a five-foot easement to pull line between the two lots. And so I think five feet would be reasonable there, but of course, staff has maybe some thoughts on that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Les, but I thought we set that at ten foot, and then it could be centered on a side yard line. That's what I thought we said.
It just, it doesn't say centered, it just, maybe, maybe.
As recently as yesterday afternoon, we were still changing those numbers.
As long as it's centered, I'm, I'm good with that. I think that's, that's good. I just would hate to.
It can be centered or not.
Gotcha, yeah.
But we did add parenthetically that centered was the intent of it.
Okay. But if, that dictates that it has to be ten foot, so if you need a five foot on one side, you would have to get five foot from the neighbor, presuming you wanted to vacate half of yours.
We're of the opinion that it takes ten feet to do any construction.
Okay.
And that easement is there for construction, maintenance, repair.
Okay.
Get equipment in, I believe, was the point you made.
To drive a truck or to
Yeah.
backhoe or a tractor or a trencher.
Sure.
And then sanitary sewer.
Well, I'm not thinking sanitary sewer for, I'm thinking more like
Sanitary sewers, we recommend twenty.
Twenty, yeah, absolutely. Okay, that's all, my only comment to that was.
Moving right on to the big one, and that's the zoning. I'm going to start off, I think this will make your day. If you were to go to Article eleven, Section one oh one, numbers two and three, the factors. I think you'll be pleased to know the factors that are charged to the planning commission have now been reduced from seventeen to nine. And five of the factors have been worked so that staff will provide five of those factors to you in their report. So there was quite serious discussion on how to work with the factors, with the main intent to reduce them. And make your workload just a little bit easier on that, but yet keep the intent of the information in the process.
And if you like that, you need to give Mark credit.
Yes.
If you don't, give less.
Now that, now we're going to actually go back here and
So are we supposed to agree with staff all the time?
Is that written in there?
I don't remember writing anything like that.
Okay, so it's, you'll provide us five as default?
We're providing you five facts.
Five facts that are
What the existing zone
The basics.
What the character of the neighborhood, those sort of things.
Okay.
Doesn't need to be clad in
Sure, that makes complete sense. Yeah.
Now, there was some very clear thinking that went on in the discussion.
Of course.
Again, Mark, he started that, and again, it started at the council level and kind of came down and understood, we've got to work with those factors.
We went back to the court case and analyzed the judge's recommendations, and, oh, it was, it was deep.
Now, if you'll, um, go back to Article four. We just want to spend a little bit of time focusing on the districts, because really, this is the heart of this. This is what makes all this come together and really impacts the development of the city. So it's very important we get this right. And I think you've seen this, we, we looked at this earlier, the districts on it. And I'm just going to go through here a few notes. We've included, right at the very beginning of, of the districts, the lot size and the bulk regulations are now tabularized. So anybody looking at that can go right to this and go to a zone, and they can find out the information they need. Basically, that's been extracted from the text and put into the tables to make it a little simpler on it. The, um, there, there are always anomalies of use whenever you're looking at these. For example, earth-sheltered dwellings. You've never had one, that I, you know, there may be a stray one. I recall one outside the city years ago on it. But there's, there's types of structures that are kind of oddities, but the idea is they don't need their own section in this thing. So we're going to pull that information out, and, and anything like that would be treated like a conditional use. I should also comment that the, many of the districts, and again, if you go back to the summary that was done, you'll see the ones that were changed or deleted and so forth. And much of the standards stay the same for your single-family, SF two, and so forth on it. Much of those standards are staying the same. What's going to make this unique, though, is when we talk about the mixed-use districts. The intent there is to increase density and give more flexibility of uses.
Can I interrupt? The earth-sheltered dwellings, that just kind of struck me. I'm just kind of like, if I'm not from this area and I've read through the Andover subdivision regulations, I see earth-sheltered dwellings. I have this vision of a bunch of people in a I'm, I'm just questioning, do we even need that? And do we
That's what we're talking about.
Okay, you're mixing that.
Those kind of things are coming out of that.
Okay, very well.
It was probably an era, it was the seventies, I'm sure, when that went in.
So we're going to clean a little bit, do a little more housekeeping.
Now, the questions are things like tiny homes and container homes and log homes. And we're trying to focus in on what you really need to do your jobs without spending pages on every possible contingency that might happen, on the theory that if it comes up and we need to address it, it can be addressed under one of the special use or conditional use, in a more generic sort of a term.
So we're cleaning that up. If you go to the multi-family district, the MF one, any references to duplexes will be removed. An effort any references to duplexes will be removed. An effort is to get things to coincide more so with the building codes. And so consider a duplex, it's two-family.
Structure.
Two-family dwelling unit is what it is. I'm going to stop at the first mixed-use one. It's the multiple-family mixed residential use district on it. And I'm glad that, you know, we've got the idea, what is the intent of these mixed use? So you see, that's part of the zoning district, that's explained in there. And to get a sense of how all of these districts relate, we actually developed a table to help ourselves study the intent of each of these zoning districts. So this one's the first one for mixed residential use, but again, the idea is to look at opportunities for increasing density on it. And Brian, I'm going to go ahead and ask a question. You know, we've talked about like an EPCOM community before, and I don't know, as you were looking at these mixed use or some of these things, did any of this strike you as relating to that type of development? Unless, I don't know if you've had a chance to think about it or?
I think it's really a mixed use. It's a, it's a single-family use.
Yes, I have. Brian and I have talked quite a bit about that EPCOM community concept and I've been over and visited those sites. I believe that that type of housing would fit in the SF three zero lot line.
Okay. Well, just for everybody's benefit here, so that, I'll do a quick presentation of what this EPCOM product is. It's a, think of like a ranch house that's ninety-foot wide. And you've, instead of being a ranch that you look at from the street, that's conventional, they've rotated that ninety degrees. So it's deep and it's narrow. And then they have a courtyard, they have them close together to have a, most of them have a courtyard feel to the side. They've been very popular. There's been over four hundred units put on the ground in our greater community area, not in Andover yet, which have been kind of pushing a little bit to get here. But anyways, they've been very successful nationwide. It's a franchise. But, so that's kind of gives you a notion of, you know, the lots are forty-eight foot wide. Instead of having a lot of real estate, I mean, there are big homes, believe it or not. They're, they're actually bigger footprint-wise than your conventional, you know, four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar house in, you know, down the street here. They're actually bigger in square footage because they don't have basements. So they're slab-on-grade. Some have, you know, second stories to them. But that gives you a quick notion of what we're talking about, just for context. A lot, you know, the idea is to, you know, take some of that more, a more compact development. It has a lot of efficiency with that compact development, which is good for our communities because, you know, instead of sprawling out and just having, you know, third acre, half acre lots everywhere, you can take those, you know, and, and compress that down. And, and it, it's really worked well. So, sorry to interrupt, but I think it's good and helpful for everybody to understand a visual of what that EPCOM product truly is.
EPCOM.
EPCOM communities, yeah. If you Google it, you can pull it up and get a better notion of that.
Epcot is Disney.
EPCOM, C-O-N.
Just to kind of, to put that into context, one of the things we did very carefully was go back to your conference plan. And you all are charged to maintain this document on it. And you will find in there issues of housing diversity on it. And this is exactly what we're talking about. This is, this is where it happens, at your level, to provide for that quality housing diversity that frankly, over time, makes or breaks the, the community in terms of population. The manufactured home subdivision was struck out as a district. It was never used. But you do still have the MH one, which is the manufactured home park district. B-one office district remained virtually the same. Les, I don't recall changes to Same for the B-two neighborhood district. Now, if you go to one eleven, the mixed-use district for neighborhood transition, where that's going to become important to you as things begin to play out for the corridor, the US four hundred corridor in there, is what's going to be that transition behind the corridor district that we'll talk about here in a little bit, the B-five? What's going to be that transition into neighborhoods, into other uses and things? This is where this mixed-use district and neighborhood transition, if you go through and, and study it, that's what the intent is. And again, from the comprehensive plan. I'm going to go, this, this might be a little bit of short discussion here, but the idea of drive-throughs being a conditional use, those can get contentious. And so that's one thing for you to be thinking about, is as we look at some of these zones, is how our drive-through facility is going to fit in. And, you know, where's it going to be permitted? Is it always going to be a conditional use? So if you'll kind of ponder that one, that's, that's a critical one.
Les, have you, has the city received any complaints? I know it was a concern of mine when the Dunkin' Donuts went in. There's a, the drive-through was pretty much right on the backside of single-family residents. Has anybody complained about that?
I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything on baseball games?
Have you heard anything, Mike?
No.
Okay. I was just curious. I mean, that's a case in point, where you have drive-through and, a recent one.
If you look at the B-four, central business, mixed-use district, again, coming from the comprehensive plan, there's discussion in there about Andover Road and especially Andover Road and Central Avenue. And you all have a vision of what's going on there in one of your cases, you know. So if you get a chance to study that particular district, the idea is over time to improve the quality of that area in terms of signage, in terms of how you treat building density in that, but to, again, improve the look. And again, I applaud you all for what you've done with those utility lines. Huge difference aesthetically on it. At huge cost, but huge benefit. Okay. On the B-five, which is the highway corridor mixed-use business district, we've made an error. We have the older version that was sent to you in your packet, and we are in process of working on the mixed-use portion of that. The idea on that is to draw from the corridor study for uses that are going to be appropriate along the highway, okay? And we actually, between the corridor study and the comprehensive plan, went back and looked at proposed land uses in a very conceptual way up there. And so the B-five highway corridor is, is going to be mixed-use. And Les, could you describe that a little bit further or give a little bit more detail?
It's hard to put in a few words. The comprehensive plan suggests that there be a, a mix of uses that would include office, retail, service businesses, multi-family, all to get that nucleus of people along that highway who could support all of those services that we all want, but we don't want in our own backyard. So it suggests density in the form of height and close proximity of buildings to the street. You'll notice that, back to that B-four district, which was the, the old shopping center district, we've stricken that huge setback that caused that variance tonight, the building being three hundred and fifty feet off the road. The trend in planning is to go back to buildings that are up closer to the street so they're more walkable with parking on the side or in the rear. That highway district would suggest that too, that it's walkable and that the buildings are close together.
If you go back to the neighborhood transition district that we were talking about that might butt up against the B-five, the four hundred corridor, I'd encourage you to look at the intent. Items one and two, it addresses, discusses mixed use as well as pedestrian environment, that walkability issue. And there's a good, short description there of what we're The mixed industrials, commercial district is intended to give a flexibility to perhaps things you've, well, you'd be doing them in the future, but you've done a good job in terms of light industry and things. But this would make that district a little bit more vibrant by including commercial uses into it. And again, all, all coming back to flexibility. And you can look at the permitted uses in there. They're, they're pretty extensive on it. And I'm just going to finish up on the industrial district. No, no changes to it. That, that'll remain intact. Again, I come back to the comment is, this is not, we're not doing anything related to changing the boundaries of the zoning districts. That's very important in case you get questions from people, this big, all these changes and stuff. That all stays intact. And we're, we're working within the confines of, of the existing districts. It's just expanding things to be more flexible. You know, that's all that we've got in terms of giving you an update. There's other things we could talk about. We're going to be back again, visiting with you. You're going to have a chance to look at this whole document. And that's when we really expect you to come back at us with, with tough questions on it. And I'd ask Vickley, Les, Dana, or Deborah, if you've got anything you want to add in terms of the update of where we're at. But we have exceeded three hundred pages. And we're not intentionally growing it. It just kind of takes on a life of its own.
But it will be interlinked and active linked.
Yeah.
Much easier to use.
I presume though, once you've diluted down all the uses, we'll have a, a matrix, a land use matrix as well?
There will be a land use matrix.
Okay.
Longly include definitions.
I like the idea of that coming, I mean, you guys are the experts, but I like that idea of coming in right behind the bulk regulations. You would see that land use matrix to see, I've got a blank business and it makes sense that, okay, now here's the details on that blank business because I can go down here to the general.
We've tried to focus, it's illustrated, which is one of the reasons it's longer. If we took the illustrations and tables out and checklists and all the other things, it would be much shorter. But we're trying to make it as useful and user-friendly as we can. So whenever there's a good reason to have a table or a, or an illustration or a diagram, there is one, or we're going to try and put one in.
I could foresee it reducing a lot of phone calls to Les and staff to, I've got this.
We think it's much more intuitive.
Yeah.
A person knows their use. They don't know what zone it fits in, so they don't have to lift, leaf through a lot of pages to get there.
Right. I think, I think it'll help you out staff-wise and phone calls and, you know, I've got a car wash. Well, which one do I go with? Well, it goes in five. Well, you pick the fifth one.
Links will make it even easier.
Good.
We appreciate your time. I know you got a little bit more on your agenda there.
Just a little bit.
So we will exit and let you finish your business.
There's your three minutes to shine.
This is going to be a two-minute capital.
All right, we have number eleven. Thank you, the Fosters. And, might as well, it's all Fosters. So we have a capital budget and improvement plan. All right. The abbreviated version, please.
I believe the planning commission is supposed to review this and approve it correct as?
Yes, by state statute, the planning commission is charged with reviewing and approving the city's capital improvement plan. Because the capital improvement plan is, is the means for implementing the comprehensive plan.
So what I would say is, I'm going to try to go through this in about five minutes. And if you would mind approving it tonight, if you call me if you have any questions on anything. But essentially, let's go to the next slide, Craig, and I'll just give the definition real quick.
There it is.
Capital improvement plan is a community plan and fiscal management tool used to coordinate the location, timing, financing of capital improvements over a multi-year period. We use five years as our timeframe for our capital improvement plan and projections. I have a few things in there that go beyond that, but that's just kind of an advisory thing. Just a reminder that our sales tax is scheduled, was scheduled to come off in October of 2020, but with the current receipts, we think we're going to be able to expire that at the end of 2018. So that's, that's good news. We've already paid off the fire truck and we just have a couple more years payment left on the new restroom and the street shop. So that's all positive. Okay, next slide. Just to remind you that we have approved bids on the amphitheater stage. It's going to be approximately $1.5 billion. Most of that is paid for with a bond issue that's going to just kind of substitute for the current bond issue and the lodge and some other park improvements. The debt payment on that is going to be paid for through fireworks, tent rentals that we charge about $7,500 per year for, cellular tower rental, which we have increased more and more revenue on that for the past ten years, and liquor tax is the other thing. So I just want to make it clear that property tax per se is not paying for the debt payments on this. The other big project in conjunction with the school district bond passing is we're hoping to put in Yorktown Road between US four hundred and Douglas, possibly extending in the next few years onto Central Avenue. We've got to work out some district, some details with the school district on that. But that will be a nice addition for a north-south road for people besides Andover Road, obviously. We are also in discussions, this is nothing firm, but I wanted to put it in there as an advisory to both the planning commission and the council, expanding Central Park in conjunction with a new subdivision. You know, obviously with any new subdivision, special assessments will pay for a good portion of it. But in order to acquire the land, you know, I think we'll again be looking at some type of trade for improvements, for land dedication. This is, there's nothing concrete about this, although we are going to update the council on a initial plan that the Fosters kind of put together for us. But to be able to acquire a little bit more park plan for Central Park, I think is something that we've envisioned, hopefully in conjunction with the development that's a little bit more upscale. Obviously just east of this area is what we're looking at. And then that's a pretty big number I've put on there. We are doing Calvake Lane to, on South Andover Road to One Twentieth. The question is, will we improve One Twentieth and One Thirtieth to Prairie Creek? I'm sure Stephanie would like this project to occur. And I don't think she'd even have to pay for any of it. But, that, that improvement of that road on One Twentieth and One Thirtieth was in the original subdivision plans. It, it never got executed. There, there is some chip and seal. It, it never got executed. There, there is some chip and seal, particularly on 130th. But if we have a potential new subdivision off of 130th, that could expedite creating curb and gutter on that road. We've looked at, you know, open ditch. There's a few problems with taking out Hedgerow and Flynn Hills National with that. So that's under strong consideration, but I think it's going to have to take some subdivision development going on just off of 130th in order for us to pursue that. But we're definitely doing South Andover Road from Calvake Lane to 120th next year. I don't know if you want to talk about a little bit what those improvements are going to look like. It's just kind of an extension of a four-lane.
Correct. And that just continues the implementation of that divided four-lane boulevard south of Andover. It ends just south of the intersection at 120th Street. Butler County may pick up in the future from there and go as far south as Rose Hill over the course of time.
Okay, next slide.
I did have one question on the, on the third bullet. The four million, what, what all would that go towards?
The purchase of the park land would be, our plan would be to trade that off with some improvements. There's going to be, and need to be a couple of bridges out there, because there's some drainage area out there. And these are major estimates here, so...
Because the bridges would be on the, on the south end, I presume?
Both on, one on Central and one at the, towards the south end of the quarter section.
Okay.
On the Yorktown Road one, is the potential developers paying for any of that?
Don't want to go, don't want to go over, well, sorry.
Yeah, that's kind of out of bounds right now.
Right, right. It just, we would like to exchange certain considerations of right of way, but we're attempting to negotiate some stuff, but I can't go into too much detail on it. But that would be somewhat of the plan on that. Real quickly, our fire department is having an analysis done of their operations. When I put up a new fire station, this and a few other things will be dependent on that analysis. And what are, what it tells us about our call volumes and the placement of a fire station. Our current fire station is about twenty years old. We just, we just paid it off. But when it was built, it was kind of built for a town that's half our size and a fire district that, you know, is about the same. And its adequacy is in question. I don't, I'm not saying for sure we would go do something, but it is something we need to consider for fire protection for our community. But again, we're having an analysis done on that. That should give us more details. And in the next year or so, we should know a little bit more about what our fire protection needs are. Okay, next slide. You can see we're, we're doing some updates to our mini play, mini park play equipment. This, we have, what, how, how many mini parks do we have in Andover? Looking out of the spot here. So we're hoping to replace all those in the next three years. We're starting this year. With, with, what's the name of that? It's not Green Valley, it's...
Jamestown.
That has some rather old equipment in it. Then we would like to build a trailhead at Main Street and the Red Bud Trail as kind of a nice amenity to the newly improved Red Bud Trail. We're already have remodeled some of the ballpark diamonds, are putting up scoreboards that were probably long overdue. But those are real nice improvements. And then we're talking about some new picnic shelters at Central Park next year. And then the next slide. Just want to remind you that we're still paying for our police department. We issued debt on it in 2004, and that won't pay off till 2024. So that's, continues to be a expense. It was sorely needed at the time, but the city's plan at that time was to pay a twenty-year debt payment on it. And I, I think it's worked out well. We just remodeled the basement and added some, some room down there. We also are purchasing new body cameras. As everybody's aware, the police are constantly under scrutiny in this day and age. And the body cameras are a major benefit to us to make sure that we have a record of everything we're doing out there. And I, I think they're still in the process of doing that, but we should have that completed relatively quickly. And about every year, we purchase three new police cars at approximately a little over $100,000 a year. And then I think the last one is just our future CIP plan for streets. Oh, I'm sorry. We have some wastewater improvements. It's a, we are currently completing a sewer interceptor that goes into the plant, a UV system. I'm sure all this is very interesting to you. And a, the centrifuge system is essentially what we do to, for an injection process.
A centrifuge takes the liquid out of sledge and makes it into a solid that can be hauled to the landfill.
And then we're hoping to continue to stretch out the need for a new plant, but you can tell it'll be expensive just to design it. If, if we have to build a brand-new plant, it would be fifteen to twenty million dollars. We're hoping we can do that, at least put that off till 2025. We have every indication that that'll be possible, but that's a major expense, and we've been trying to do whatever we can to put that off. Obviously, the more households you have to help pay for something like that, the less expensive it is for everybody, so... And then I think the next one is kind of the larger improvements that are funded a lot by the Wichita area metropolitan planning organization and, and our city's sales tax. And this one, instead of going into great, in-depth detail, if you would like to call me and talk about them, they're just, they're kind of long-range things, but there's a lot of different projects on there. Again, Les is a part of the Wichita area metropolitan planning organization and has done a great job at getting us allotments of what is generally federal and state money to pay for close to eighty percent of our projects. You can see it varies up there some, but it's been a huge benefit and added transportation enhancements to the city that I don't think we could have grown the way we have without, so... Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, otherwise we can, well, I guess we should get a motion to approve the CIP.
If there's no questions, they entertain a motion on the item 11. I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any member items? Don't jump out of your seats here. Okay, we're done with the member items. Can I have a, a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Okay, I'll do that too. I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
You got a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.